To session the 28th of April council time, old business. Motion to approve the minutes, any comments or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Okay, we have the American Rescue Plan.
This will be Mark Gasaway going over some information regarding the new American Rescue Plan Act.
Go ahead and begin, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Again, I, as requested by council, I wanted to get some information out in front of you. I'm sure you're all aware of the American Rescue Plan Act. I, I know that we will be receiving our funds here probably in a couple of weeks, so this is good timing. I apologize, I did not change the date on the presentation originally. We were scheduled a couple of weeks ago, and I know you've been very busy. And this is some important information, so getting it with a somewhat fresh mind is, is important, so. I'm gonna start with a broad overview of some of the funding that's available to citizens. And, and this is coming from various resources, and then I'm gonna narrow that down so that we can focus on what will be coming to the county. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So the American Rescue Plan, it's, it's a massive $1.9 trillion. A bill, it affects many segments of the economy. So when, when we talk about the American Rescue Plan, we're talking about a lot of different funding streams. So I've tried to parse these out so that the council will be able to see that there are funding streams that will be coming into the state and into the county that won't be through the direct allotment that I'm gonna focus on in a little, a little bit later. So I wanted to kind of briefly outline what's coming in. So if you look at, again, education, $172 billion. This is coming into the schools for, you know, various needs. This, this will be coming into our school districts. I just wanted to kind of point out at the top, you can see that there's an emergency connectivity fund that is to help schools so that they can improve their, their connectivity. So a lot of these issues and, and needs that the community will have could, could be answered through some of these other funding streams. Over on the housing side, this has been very, there's been a lot of focus on the housing. In addition to the American Rescue Plan, if you recall back in December, with the second stimulus plan, the county received $15 million in emergency rental assistance and an additional $15 million from the state. So we are currently processing through that first $30 million. And, and I'm happy to report, if you aren't already aware, that the agencies that we work with, we've already received applications that will distribute that first $30 million. So we are anticipating that by the end of this year, we'll have been, we'll be able to take that initial round of rental assistance and have that distributed. In this bill, we anticipate an additional 30 million coming to the county in that form. So that would be a total of $60 million. You'll also see, if you look in the, in the gray box down below, that almost $10 billion in homeowner assistance. From that fund, the state is going to receive $173 million. And the state right now looks like they will be distributing that fund directly. It won't come to the counties per se, but the state will be managing that program. So there's, again, a lot of housing funding coming through. A lot of these programs expanded the definition of housing to include utilities, to include internet on the homeowner assistance. It includes mortgage payments, property taxes, insurance. So it's, it's covering the whole needs to keep people in their homes. So if we go on to the next slide, please. Again, two other areas, economic resilience, $71 billion. There's a lot of funding that's going through here. Transit, airports, railways, a lot of different funding that we may have access to. On the Health and Human Services side, you can see that there's $15 billion for vaccine activities. And again, a lot of the Health and Human Services side, that's coming through the State Department of Health directly to our Clark County Public Health. So these programs, these dollars will be coming into those programs directly. So before I get on to the county portion, any question on the, the broader bill overall?
Questions of any councilors?
Okay, let's move on to the, to the state and local funding. Next slide, please. Okay, so state and local governments, they were allotted $350 billion. You can see in the lower left-hand corner, $65.1 billion to counties. Now that is being distributed directly. So Clark County's allotment or eligibility is about $95 million. That's what, that's what the county will be receiving directly. Now that funding comes in two tranches. One will receive this year, in fact, it's probably about mid-May when we'll receive that. We'll receive half of that, and then 12 months from now, we'll receive the second half. So of the, of the state and local recovery funds will be receiving that 95 million over two years in two different, two different amounts. Or the same amount in two different years, does that, if that makes sense? So. So today, what I want to talk about is, is just getting general guidance from the council. Now I'm gonna explain in the next couple of slides what some of those eligible uses are for this funding and talk about some of the guidelines or best practices that have been set forth on how to use that. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So these are, these are some of the eligible uses for the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, as they call it, the ARPA funding. First of all, the biggest difference between the CRF funding or the coronavirus relief funding that we received last year and the ARPA funding is that the ARPA funding has expanded the use so that we can replace lost revenues. So any, any revenues that had, had an that were impacted by the coronavirus, or there was an economic impact to the county, we can replace those revenues. Additionally, we're able to continue to support expenditures to help combat the, the impacts of COVID-19. Okay, so those are, that was kind of what we were doing before with the CRF funds. We were offsetting those expenses, but now we also can replace the revenues that were lost before. And then there's a few other areas. Premium pay for essential workers. We have not had premium pay at the county, so that's really not a category that we really need to talk about. And then investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. These are allowable, but I would suggest that there are a lot of other funding that we could do the same thing with. So that may or may not be, based on council's decision, something that we want to pursue at this time. There are some restrictions, and I just wanted to point these out briefly. So we cannot allocate these funds to an area where we would offset or reduce a tax. And, and I don't know that that's an issue here. But we just want to be careful that we're not using these to give tax relief. They were not designed to do that, and they are also not designed to do top, top, topping up pension funds. Now, we don't have a pension fund, ours is run through the state. So again, that's not an issue for us, but those are just considerations that we, we want to keep in mind as, you know, council decides how they want to allocate these funds. So questions on the, on the uses of the funds before I move on? I, I don't want to wait till the end. I know you probably are gathering questions as you go, but I'd prefer to kind of talk about these as we go.
Yeah. A couple of questions on, because I hadn't really seen it before, and, and I would advocate for broadband infrastructure investment. But water and sewer, what, what are we available, what can we spend in water? So clean water, can we invest in cleaning up Lake Vancouver and Lacamas Lake? Is, are those investments that?
Yeah, and kind of let me describe. A lot of cities have, a lot of cities, they actually provide water services, and, and the county doesn't provide that utility. So that really doesn't apply to us, but we do, we do provide through the regional wastewater, you know, sewer services. So I mean, there are possibilities there. Again, we have other funding available for, you know, the regional wastewater, and there's other infrastructure funding for both that and, and broadband. So again, as we prioritize how our county wants to use the funding, you know, those are allowable uses, but maybe not as high a priority as others. So any other?
I'd like to go back to your question, counselor. It says investment in water infrastructure. So what if the part of the cleaning up of Lacamas and, and Vancouver lakes involved aerating the water, which would have some infrastructure to it, just as a, just as an example? Would that be allowed?
And again, I, I can ask those questions, but when we talk about water infrastructure, we're really about providing utility-type water services to citizens.
To citizens.
Does that make sense?
It, it does. I didn't pick up on that from the list.
For example, if you look at, here's a good example. They've had issues in Michigan, particularly Flint, Michigan, with their, with their pipes, right?
Right.
So they could use this to help provide that replacement of those, I think it was lead-based pipe or whatever. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So there's some, if we go the next, to the next slide. Okay, there, there are some recommendations that have been kind of formulated into a best practice of how to use the funds. And so let's, let's kind of go through these bullet points just real quickly. One thing we want to be sure we don't do is create new ongoing programs using this funding. Because if you recall, this is one-time money. We get to use it once and it, it goes away. So we want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation where we, we either create or subsidize ongoing programs that will last, again, the good thing about this funding is we have until 2024 to use it. So after that time period, either we've used it or it's gone away. I would suggest that we'll use it much sooner than 2024. I just, I, I see that the needs there much sooner. Secondly, it says replenish reserves to offset revenue declines. And we, in financial services, we began studying the funds from last year and where we've lost revenues. And there's a, there's a couple of funds, particularly the, the general fund, where we've lost some significant revenues, where we've already gone through and calculated what the replacement to that fund might look like. And it's in the, the, the range of about $6.7 million, just replacing the lost revenue in the general fund for one year. Now, if you remember, there will be ongoing impacts in 2021, possibly 2022, that we could use this funding to replace that lost revenue. Another fund that we've done an analysis for is our Event Center Fund. If you recall, we've had to close all our events at the Event Center. We weren't able to have the fair. That fund has six, has experienced significant revenue loss. And so with this funding, we would be able to replace that revenue and they would not have to show the financial impact of those losses. So that's, that's bullet point two. The recommendation is, is that we replenish our, our reserves or our revenue that was lost first. Secondly, or the third bullet point says, cover operating deficits caused by COVID-19. We continue to have ongoing expenses for COVID-19 efforts. A lot of those you'll see particularly in community services. They have ongoing efforts. If you recall, the emergency rental assistance provides only a small amount for the administrative cost, but to support that program fully, we've committed additional resources. This funding would be able to pay for those additional resources in community services. Clark County Public Health, again, we're looking to see what funding that they are being able to receive, but this funding could supplement costs that aren't covered by the funding that they receive through the state. So, and there are other areas too. We know that there's some technology needs. We know that we received requests for additional storage for, from the PA's office for the, the court cases simply because they're taking longer to resolve. So there's a lot of ongoing needs that we'd be able to address with this funding. And then the fourth bullet point, as it says, invest in critical infrastructure. So the needs of the county's infrastructure are one thing. There are certain things that we could do within our own facilities to continue to make them, I guess, more safe. There are costs that we will have to incur to reopen buildings for the public as, as we start to reopen the county again. So these are the types of costs that we could cover under the infrastructure. So any questions up to that point? So you go to the next slide? Oh, sorry.
Just a quick one. How does the work that is needed on the jail fit with that last bullet point?
That's a very good question, and I, I believe it would fit. Some of the work that we could do at the jail would be perfectly in line with this. So I think that that would be a very good possibility. Now, building a new jail, I don't know if that works. But certainly maybe renovating or making renovations to the existing facility. I think that, I think that would fall right in line with what this is, what the intent of this to do.
Great.
Okay. Any, anything else before I move on? Okay, let's move on. I got a couple more slides still. Okay, again, these are just recommendations. Depending on how broad the council wants to go, we can look at, we, we certainly want to consider all of the resources that the county will be receiving, not just our direct allocation, but if you recall, all those other sources of revenue that'll be coming from the state and directly to some of our departments. For example, our, our emergency rental assistance. We want to have a holistic approach on how we address the issues, correct? I, I, if we have the ability to focus money meant specifically for a specific area, I think we should receive or look for that money first, rather than using the direct allocation, which we can use for multiple things. Again, considering regional initiatives, partnering, partnering with other ARPA recipients. These are, you know, all suggestions on how we could use this funding, so. Next slide, please. And this last consideration, it, I know that when we went through the CRF funding, we were under such constricted time restraints that we had to make decisions very quickly. We were attempting to meet guidelines that had been imposed upon us. We do have much more time now to work with this funding. We, the bill allows us to spend it up until calendar year 2024. There are, again, I, I believe that we'll have it spent well before then. I just see the need out in our county to have it spent sooner. But we have the time to consider, and, and again, even, even if we consider, you know, two of the main priorities here. One, replacing lost revenue and supporting ongoing expenses. There, there should be significant funding left over to do some good things with. So we can take the time to consider those for the, you know, for the counselor to, council to get input. So that's kind of, that's kind of the thought here with this slide, so. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna pause here and, and try and get feedback from the council. What my intent today is, is to get some general direction. Are we, are we moving as, as a finance staff? Are we moving in the right direction? Should I continue to do work on looking at our revenue replacement? Trying to quantify what our additional expenditures are? And then bring that information back to council? Are those the same priorities that you have? So that's kind of what I'm trying to get feedback from the council on today.
Comments from council? Well, I'll go ahead and start then, Mark. I, I think certainly you're right on target. There's nothing that you've said that I disagree with, but they're all very broad statements. As far as funding priorities, I could see the value in parking a lot of this money into our, our revenue balances to, to increase them, because that gives us the flexibility and time to then decide how best to spend it. You know, and utilizing all available resources from the state as well as partnering with other municipal entities. You know, I, I think everything you've said makes sense, but, but the detail is where we need to flush it all out. I mean, I, I want to include broadband. I, I want to include additions to the jail. I, you know, I want to aerate our lakes, you know, as a, as a component to our stormwater runoff efforts. We need a public defense setup, you know, there's a lot we can do. And so we just need to get, as you said, be very detailed and pragmatic and, and think this through. So I think you're, you know, the revenue replacement and parking a lot of these, this money into our, our account balances makes the most sense, especially in those funds that are most flexible, like our general fund, so that we can take our time and put this money to good use. So I, you know, I don't know how to give you more detail at this point, other than let's, let's get it allocated. Let's spend, you know, where we have to spend money, let's spend it right now. We, you know, we've been doing that in public health, particularly in our testing sites and vaccination sites and other rental assistance and utility assistance. I mean, we're gonna have to do more of the same to make sure everyone benefits the way this money was meant to keep us afloat and move us forward. So I, I don't have any other specific comments, other comments by council.
I agree completely with what you just said, and, and Mark, with the direction that you're headed right now. It's terrific. I look forward to seeing some dollar signs attached to these areas so that we'll know really what we're talking about as far as the overall allocations.
Great. So what I will do then, I'll continue doing the analysis of the funds that I believe the, were most impacted, where their revenues were most impacted by the COVID. And I will bring that number forward to you and I give you a, I, I guess, a list at a future time of, here's the, here's the revenue replacement that I believe is, is sufficient for 2020. And again, keep it in mind that 2021 isn't completed yet. We won't be able to look at that until next year, but we can look at the 2020 revenues. And then I'm also, I've also been compiling requests from different departments of ongoing funding that they need to to pay for expenses to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. So those are the two things that I'll be able to provide you probably within the next few weeks. Let's say in, in May, we'll, we'll have that information available to you. That will give you a number of, well, we have revenue replacement, we have ongoing expenses, what's left over? And then you can have that discussion on council. How do we want to use that? What is the most effective use of this additional funding that we have? Does that sound like a, a good step forward?
It does to me. I, I haven't heard, you know, I don't see Julie anymore. Temple, did you have some comments to make as well?
I generally also support what we've seen so far in the presentation, and I know you're gonna go on with a little bit more detail, Mark, but I would agree that if we can start getting 2020 information, so we can plug that in and know what we're working with, and to the extent possible, projections so that we, you know, have, have as strong a sense as possible of what we have to work with. I agree, but I, so far, so good.
Okay.
Mark, one other point that I hadn't mentioned earlier, that, you know, we really hadn't quantified, and, and we haven't heard in great detail, basically from the nonprofit community. We know they've been suffering and struggling as well and lost a lot of donations and, and revenue that, from whatever streams they have. So I, I'm not sure how we capture that, but I want to make sure that's a category that we address as well.
Let, let me show the next couple of slides, because that's actually one of the, one of the options. So let's go to the next slide. With, with the revenue replacement, these are just some of the revenue categories that have already been identified, that have had loss due to the, the COVID pandemic. This is not a comprehensive list. These are some of the higher-profile areas that we've looked at. I do have a comprehensive list for both the general fund and the event center fund, but we'll be, I'll, I'll be able to present in detail all of the funds and all of the revenues within those funds that we would be looking at doing revenue replacement for. So we go to the next slide, please. Here's some of the expense impacts. As you know, we approved hiring an ARPA program coordinator. We'll be interviewing for that this week. This position will not only be continuing on with this specific analysis, but we'll also be looking to coordinate, if you recall, all those other revenue streams that are coming from the state or from the feds. We want to make sure that we have access to those, and we need somebody at the county that will have the direct responsibility to know what information we have. As an example, I received information yesterday that to receive the second round of emergency rental assistance, it will be an application process, just like we had for the original round. So that type of information needs to be coordinated through a single individual so that we make sure DCS is getting the funding that they require, that public health is getting the funding that they require, that the rest of the county is, we, we don't want to lose out on potential revenue opportunities or recovering from the expenses that we're having to, we're having to put out at this time. So these are just some of the thoughts behind COVID expense impacts, and again, not meant to be comprehensive. There's, there's actually quite a few things that we'll be going through. I have received additional information from public health about additional support that they may be requiring, simply because a lot of the revenue streams they have are very specific, and they're not able to cover some of the administrative areas or some of the areas where they may not have sufficient funding. So if you go to the next slide, please. So if you go to the next slide, please. And then again, once we have identified those things, there's a lot of opportunity that we have again. If you recall, under the CRF funding, we were able to do some economic stability for local businesses. We did some support for the utility for housing. Again, modification to county facilities is the council suggested, we may be able to look at the jail, we may be able to look at other facilities. Look at our remote service model. I don't see that ending anytime soon. We may be needing to develop, you know, things. A great example of this is the ability to do, you know, online applications for our building permits. So there's a lot of opportunity that we have here, so. The question mark down there is meant to be is meant to be, councillor, you, you can be thinking of these things. And, you know, if they fit within these guidelines, we certainly have the opportunity. And again, we have some time to actually think about how we want to use this so we can make this. You know, it's, 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 to me, really a once in a lifetime opportunity to have some funding that we can do something with and really add benefit and value to the citizens of Clark County, so. Any more questions? That's my last slide. I think I have the direction I need. And then in, in a month from now, about four weeks, I'll come back to you with the specifics on the revenue replacement and the ongoing expenses. And then we can look at, well, what does that mean for other opportunities, so.
Thanks, Mark. Any last comments by council before we move on to new business? Sounds like we're ready for new business. Is this your court recruitment? Kathleen, are you taking that?
I am, thank you. So the council received notice that Judge Hagens, Hagenson is retiring at the end of June and per RCW, the art, the county council or the judicial, the legislative authority has the ability or the authority to fill all judicial vacancies in the district court appointment. So what I'm just asking for today is for council's approval to go ahead and publicize this notice to the public that outlines that the applicant must be registered voter in Clark County and a lawyer admitted to practice law in the state of Washington. There's also a questionnaire that will be required for all applicants to fill out. We are looking at the past recruitments that they have done. This just has general information regarding like the law schools that they attended jurisdictions, current positions, employment history. And then additionally, they will need to have the Washington Bar Association provide any information regarding complaints or disciplinary actions. And then all of that information will be submitted to the council's office here, either by email to Tina or in person. And then we will gather that information and then provide information to the council as well as the local bar association so that they can also do a bar poll. So the ask today is just to ask for your approval to go ahead and provide this notice. I know the district court is eager to have this position filled as they're already short support in the judge roles right now so that we can help them get some assistance with their court.
Questions from any council member?
I don't have a que, a question, but I have one point. This all looks really good to me and I appreciate the information and and being able to review it all. Noting that it has apparently been a while since we've done this. I just, I'm sure you would catch this before it went out, but on the last page of the questionnaire, we should update it from Bill Barron to Kathleen Otto.
Yes, no, that is correct. We are for also just double checking on those, on the charges that are identified. That's the only document that hasn't been updated for your consideration today, but we are actually actively making sure that that's accurate. So yes. Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions? Otherwise, I would give this a thumbs up. Other support from council on moving forward? Do we need an actual vote, Kathleen?
I think just seeing the majority is fine for us to move forward. Yes, and I, and I am seeing that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so proclamation request?
Is Rebecca Royce on? Otherwise, I will take this. Okay. Oh, she's here. Good.
So this is a request for a proclamation to celebrate Community Action Month. We are the Community Action Agency for Clark County. And every year in May, the National Community Action Partnership puts together a toolkit for us to use to celebrate the cell, you know, things that we have done as a community action agency in Clark County. And one of those things is a proclamation that I've drafted to put forward to you to hopefully accept for for celebrating community action.
Questions or comments by council?
Looks good to me.
And as, as well, I support this proclamation. All right, I think we have, we have three. Anything further on this issue? Okay, thank you for that presentation. Councillor reports.
I'd like to give one report. And it is on the Kallits Tribal Foundation Clark County Fund. Councillor Olson and I met with this group yesterday. And it is wonderful. The funds from Kallits are from their, a percentage of their gaming revenue. And the funds are only for recognized nonprofits in Clark County. So there is a total of an anticipated 3.5 million plus that we will be giving out as the year rolls along. So when we met yesterday, we were able to grant the first almost 1 million. And it went to 17 nonprofits all the way that deal with so many important issues in the county, all the way from Vancouver Housing Authority, which we know well for their work with emergency shelter for the homeless to Craft 3, which will increase the number of business loans to entrepreneurs of color, a group that is affected disproportionately by the pandemic and often has difficulty in qualifying for regular traditional bank loans. So the the funds will be out very quickly because that's the way this group operates. And I really did not know before being appointed to this group the volume of funding that is available from the tribes for our nonprofits. And it is really a wonderful contribution to the community and in my opinion and and the opinion of many, so. I'll keep you apprised as we will meet monthly and proceed to give out awards as applications come in.
Thank you, Karen. Other councillor reports? Okay, hearing none. Any work session requests?
No work session request today.
Thank you. And Lindsay?
I have nothing today. Thank you.
Wonderful. So I I think we have one executive session on real estate for 15 minutes, RCW 42.30, point 110, REN 1, REN B. I'm assuming that there will not be action after that executive session.
That is correct. No action.
Okay, so I I believe that concludes this council time and we'll log out and log into our executive session. See you all in a few minutes.